One Nation Under Our Indivisible Liberty and Justice for All.
Thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is the election of officers. Given that we've completed or will have completed at this meeting our fiscal year. And the floor is open for nominations for Chair of the Select Board.
I nominate Bob Butler for Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any further nominations?
I nominate Abden Simmons.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor of Bob Butler. I'll vote for myself. So that's a majority. I guess we can vote for, pass votes for Abden as well to see if there's a tie. In which case, we have to rework this whole thing. All in favor of Abden. Okay, so, I guess I'm the chairman. Nominations for Vice Chair, please.
I nominate Abden Simmons.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have there any further nominations for Vice Chair? Nominations are closed. All in favor of Abden Simmons as Vice Chair. I'll vote for myself. Unanimous. We need to elect a Chair for the Board of Assessors.
I nominate Katie.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any, are there any further nominations for Katie? For, for Katie, sorry. For Chair of the Board of Assessors. Okay, no, nominations are closed. All in favor of Katie for Chair? That's five zero. The last thing we need to do is decide who's going to be interviewing during the coming year of candidates for the committees. I think you and Jan and Abden did it last time. I know Clint and I have done it together.
It was Katie and Abden in 2017, Jan and Abden in 2018, 19.
I think Clint and I did it in 2016. So, just trying to start over again, I guess. Volunteers, I guess, are the best way to do it. Katie, volunteer? Any other volunteers? I'll volunteer to work with Katie on that then. Alright, I guess we move forward. There are no public hearings. And I request the indulgence of the Board to make an adjustment to the agenda now before we normally would. We have some gentlemen here who are available to sign a contract. And the motion is, the request is to move that, move that process up to the next item on the agenda. Is there a, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. We just want to have Tom back out on the street.
Where he belongs.
Okay, all in favor of that adjustment. Alright, so, we're moving item 12.3 up to now. And I guess we need Giff and Tom.
We need Giff and Tom. And I'd just like to say, this was the first contract that we did together. And I thought that Abden, I want to thank Abden and Jan. They were great sounding boards and great ideas. And it was truly a good thing to work with gentlemen and ladies that have the good of Waldeboro in their heart. As, as much as it's a contract for the employees, it's a contract for Waldeboro and it's fair. And what became very evident was, and Jan and Abden, feel free anytime to chime in because I'll just keep going about how wonderful my, my people are. But it's just such a blessing to have such nice and wonderful people to work with. And we have a wonderful Public Works Department and an absolutely wonderful Police Department and we are very blessed.
And their ears are bruning right now.
So, you should probably approve it before we all sign it too.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
He's a Waldeboro pen.
You're using Waldeboro pen, okay. That's some signature, sweetie.
That could be your signature.
And there, there's Gifford.
There he knows how to write.
He's so good. I also have, in the back there, there's Derek Booker. And we need to give him a big shout out. He's one of our star EMS employees, along with Kyle. Kyle, oh my goodness. Andrew Santis and Kyle's son, who is one of our volunteer firefighters. One of our paramedics. And also, one of our reserve police officers. So he's somebody who is really dedicated to this town and I just, both of these gentlemen in the back are awesome and I just, since I have you here captive in a room, I had to call you out. So thank you for your service too, especially that Andrew, I'll tell you, he's just all over the place.
I gotta get him here full time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're gonna give him a hug.
I'm gonna give him a hug.
Oh, it was so hard to be mean to them, I think negotiating.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, brought my thought here before they lose my mind, you know, it happens. It was a good thing.
It went very smoothly.
It went very smoothly.
Smooth and friendly.
Yep. We did good.
Okay, back to the normal order of things. We have a presentation tonight from Fire Department.
Speaking of another wonderful human.
It's no secret to you about the level of volunteerism in our Fire Department. And I'm very proud of the entire department. And tonight, we're here to recognize somebody who chose to go above and beyond. Marie Searls joined our department this past year. And shortly after joining, she asked if I could get her into a class and there happened to be one coming up here in Lincoln County. So we got her signed in. She attended it and she's completed it successfully. And she didn't miss a single class. One of the only ones in the student that didn't miss any. So we're very proud of her. Since joining our department, she's easily become one of the most dedicated members. She's filled a great void that we've had in the last several months. And we really appreciate her efforts and her being here. So Marie, if you would come up. When someone joins our department, before they receive their training, they are all given a green helmet. Which is very identifiable. In our department, the colors of your helmet mean something. White helmets are for the chiefs, reds are for the captains, yellows are for the lieutenants, and blacks are for the firefighters. If you have a green helmet, that means you haven't received your training, so you're very limited as to what you can do. And so Marie has been wearing a green helmet since she came on. And now with the completion of her program and with her receiving her certificate, it is with great pleasure, on behalf of the entire town and all of its citizens, I'd like to present you with your black helmet. And thank you for your dedication and your service.
We should do that every time.
And I believe Karen and Tony have something to say to us tonight.
Hello, I'm Karen Clark and I'm representing the Board of the Madomic Arts Project. We have designed a program to partner and collaborate with a number of different civic organizations in town. And this program, we're calling it Edible Waldeboro. And what it means is that we're putting edible plants in front of all the downtown businesses. And this, the process of this is to show by example that you can grow food in very small places. And that will help with the food insecurity issues around town. It also brings light to the fact that you should be giving to food banks and supporting them. You should be going to your local farmers markets. It's all a benefit and it's all something that all our community needs. We need to support it in a great deal. So the partners are Madomic Arts Project, of course, that has designed this program. Waldeboro Business Association, that is going to engage all of our business organizations to participate. We will be giving free the pots, the food, the plants. The plants were all donated by Moose Crossing and Barley Joe's. The soil was purchased by the farmer's market. We have Feed the Need, which Tony Galase is part of this program. It's a restorative justice program. And they have planted all of the pots and they have donated the pots and they brought them all downtown with their trucks. And we rushed around and watered them all and got them all in place. And, and we're going to have, the Waldeboro Conservation Commission is going to support the civic participation in this program. The Garden Club is also going to give the word out, get people to participate. And again, we're starting in the downtown, but we'd love for this to grow into all the areas and Route One and other, you know, any retail businesses in Waldeboro would be welcomed to join in. We're going to be putting together a flyer. We're going to identify the kind of plants are in front of each business, the businesses that are hosting this. And we will expand the flyer. Whoever wants to join, they just need to let me know and we'll, we'll add this on. This will be on Facebook, it's in the press. And there'll be contact information. MadomicArtsProject.org is the website for us, so that you can get in touch with us. Let us know you want to participate and we will add all the information relative to your business. Make sure you get, you know, credit for doing this sort of thing. And again, we've had a lot of donations. It's been, it's been exciting to see how much the community is willing to give to make this sort of thing happen. And I just want to say that, please consider participating in this endeavor. We're planning press releases, we'll have flyers at each location. Tony Galase is involved in the, the part of the project that has actually done the work. And he's also restoring the Otis Benner Farm. This farm and forge is located between the Madomic Variety and the Veterinary Service, excuse me, and the Harvest Moon. And it's acres and acres of land. And they're restoring the farm and the forge. Bill Maxwell is going to be writing an entire historical article and be supporting the historic essence of this farm. Will be sharing a lot of information with the Waldeboro Historic Society. And they will be bringing back, you know, the farming to this area, the forge. And they'll also be bringing in a greenhouse. They need help with fundraising in order to put the greenhouses in place, in order to get some of the work that they need. And they need volunteers. And I'll let Tony Galase explain the rest of this project.
So my name's Tony Galase and I am doing all that work up on Route One. And you probably see all the logging being done up there and people go by and they kind of wonder what we're doing up there. So, what we're doing is, that property of Otis Benner's was three separate lots. And we were able to buy all three and put them back into the original farm, which I understand is the original farm land. Instead of it being developed, which that was, I think, a concern of a lot of the neighbors and a lot of people in the community, that it would be developed, so I bought all three lots and putting it back into farming. And what we're doing now is clearing the second lot near the road. And we want to put two greenhouses in and a building. So what I, so what I do, people, a lot of people don't understand what I do. I take people that have gotten in trouble and instead of them going to jail, I go to their sentencing and I ask the judge to release them into my program. And instead of sitting in a jail cell, I have them work. And I have them working in the community. Instead of not getting anything out of the jail sentence, I make them plant a garden, we donate everything. Everything is, we're not completely nonprofit, but everything that we, we produce, we give away. If it's artwork, if it's vegetables, if it's whatever we're doing. And also, I just purchased a property on Cross Street, which everybody knows as Maynard Tomers. The Junk Guy, he always hauled all the junk. And so we've been cleaning that up, so that property is about ninety percent clean. And what we're doing up there is refurbishing sailboats, rowboats. And my, the same people in my programs are, they are redoing these boats, and this is a picture of one of the boats right here. It's a fourteen foot, it's just a real small sailboat. Instead of some, throwing these kids or people onto a great big boat and say sail it, we stash it on a real small one. And this is like, this is about twelve, fourteen feet long. You can sail with one hand, you know, one hand on the rudder and one hand on the sail. So, and I also purchased a gunter's studio a few years ago and we do artwork there also. So anybody that comes into my program, they say, "Well, we don't know how to do carpentry." Well, I say, "Well, can you paint? Can you fix a boat? Can you garden? Can you..." You can't really say, people don't fit into my program because I make them, I don't make them. I have a conversation with them and I say, "What are you good at?" There's no sense to take a gardener and say, "We're going to go fishing." Or, "We're going to go boating if you don't understand and you don't want to do it." So, so in the last two or three years, I've bought three different properties. And what I'm trying to show with the boating is that, and the farming also. When you're farming, the chemicals that you use in your farm are going right into the river, which I think is a big concern in the town. And so, I think years ago, the fishermen, the farmers, everybody kind of worked together. And I think we've kind of grown apart, just because it's, fishing is very involved, farming is very involved. And I'm just trying to bring that back together and not, not to make a profit, but just to show people that it can be done. And on a small scale too, you know. We're not trying to feed the whole town, we're just trying to grow a few vegetables. And if somebody needs some extra food, extra, extra whatever, we just give it away. And with the Otis Benner Farm, one of the Benners next door, that was his lifelong dream, it was Otis's brother, to have a greenhouse. And I want to get him involved with this greenhouse project. I can't remember his name, but I can't remember a lot of people's names.
Bob.
Bob.
I grew up next door, so I know.
Right, right. So, so Bob's all on board with that. The reason why I bought that was because I think it was going to be developed and I wanted to just keep it back the way it was. And I've done it on other properties and, I've done it on the Reef Road. We bought a farm up there, the neighbors ended up moving next door. And I told them, I just said, you know, "Use it as you always have." They lost, they didn't lose the farm, but they, they were financially strapped, so they couldn't keep it. So that particular person still has his gardens on my property, he still hunts on my property, he still cuts his firewood on my property. And I just say, "Use it as, as you always have." It's, it's, you know, I'm just lucky to buy the properties and I just want to keep it always. I don't want to move into a place and say, "Everybody's out and this is mine." I always try to involve everybody. And that's what I'm trying to do with the, with Otis Benner's up there. I'm trying to, you know, I could just fix it up and resell it and make a bunch of money, but I'm trying not to do that. I'm trying to see what the town, it's kind of why I'm here tonight. Kind of see what the town wants to do with it. I want greenhouses and trails and Historic Society's going to be there with, you know, with their furniture and getting the forge going and, you know, I could very well just say, "Well, it's fixed up now and we've cut all the wood and make a ton of money." But, I'm not going to do that. I want to do, I want to, that's why I'm here, to see what the town wants to do, if you guys have any, you know, if you have any thoughts about it or whatever. And I'm not just doing this in Waldeboro, I'm doing it in other towns too. So, you know, if this project doesn't work out, it's not the end of the world, but I would like to see it work out. I grew up in this town and kind of want to, you know. I think, I think when you're successful is when everybody gets together. It doesn't mean how much money you have, it just means if you can work with people and get along with your neighbors, you know, so. But I'm sure, I'm sure people have some questions about what we're doing up, you know, different properties or if you have any questions, feel free.
I'd just comment that Tony has always given back to the community and he's been doing that for many years in lots of different ways. He also delivers the mail.
So I do, I, I mean, I do have, I do know a lot of people that, you know, just in the community that would help and, but what I'm trying to get at is, so on these greenhouses, instead of just saying, "We're going to grow vegetables," I want to get a lot of people involved with it. The Cub Scouts, the 4H, you know, the Garden Club, so like the flowers that are grown on the islands, you know, in town and different places. We just added that yesterday with the edible gardens, we just planted all that stuff. But I'd like to have the Garden Club say, "Hey, we want to grow this stuff and get Madomic Valley's greenhouse involved." And say, you know, instead of just going somewhere and picking up the flowers, we actually grew them. And then we, you know, what I'm, what I was trying to do up in Jefferson is, put up greenhouses up there and have the kids say what they would eat on their lunch program. And they would grow them. Instead of getting a lunch tray and saying, "Well, I don't like this," and we just throw it away. Those kids have some type of connection and they say, "I grew this." And maybe I'll take, maybe I'll take a little taste of it, you know, because we had to start to finish. And I bought a field up there directly across the street from the school. And we're still in the process of getting all that in the works. But we built the twenty-eight by twenty-eight building up there. And we hay the field. It's organically certified and I'm just trying to get volunteers for that too. That was another piece of land that's going to be developed and I stepped in, I said, "I want that land." Wayne Cunningham hays it for me and, I'm just one guy, so I'm trying to do all these projects. And I own a whole bunch of land and I, I'm trying to do some community stuff. And that's why I'm here tonight, to try to get some community involvement in what we're doing. So.
Thank you.
Tony? You still have, you still have a little farm up?
Yes, and I bought, when you first moved to town, I bought your tractor from you and I was your mailman and, yeah, I still have that.
That wasn't my question, I was just curious what you, whether it was still moving or not.
It's still moving.
Fifteen years ago you got that.
Yeah, we, we rebuilt the whole thing, it's still working.
Amazing. How are you going to set this up structural wise? Is it an LLC and are you responsible for the guys who are going to be working with you?
Yeah.
Is there, how does that work?
Usually it's one or two guys that work with me. And basically, when I got to work at the post office, they show up between one and two o'clock. I get out of the post office at two. And I work as long as they work. They work till seven or eight at night. I bring my lunch and we just work until they're work, until they're done. So the people I had over the winter was the people that got caught shooting up the houses around town. Shot the windows out of houses and, so, really good guys, really smart, really strong guys. And they didn't want to sit in a jail cell, so I went to court with them. And they said, "What can we do?" One guy, he was two months into my program, it was a six-month program, he just had, he had a baby on the third month. That was the big deal, to keep, keep him out of prison, keep him out of jail and see that baby being born. So he's got, he's already gone through the program. I had a little bit of a job on the third piece where we're going to put the greenhouses. It was just a kind of jumbled up thing, getting, just doing different things with the property, purchasing it. So the guy that helped me fix up the Otis Benner Farm, he's already done with the program, but he's coming back in the fall to put up the greenhouses. And the reason why I'm moving these, my program is because my parents' farm on Depot Street is where I grew up. So when people get done with my program, I don't know if I treat them too good or they just like what they're doing. But they always just kind of seem to want to help out, which is fine. But like Sunday morning, when you want to go out and have a cup of coffee on your porch and your workers are still there. You know, it's kind of hard to separate that. You know, we used to have a swimming pool at my parents' house, which I acquired that property. But I, I put outdoor laundry in for them, shower, toilet. So anybody could just, you know, which has happened in the past. I'll come home, someone's sitting by the fire cooking their food and taking a shower in the outdoors. You know, it's a, it's a building, but there's a shower in it. So, you know, I'd say, "Hey, how's it going?" You know, and they cook their food, do their laundry and I give them twenty bucks or whatever they need and kind of send them on their way. And, but that's why I'm kind of moving it to Route One, because I need to be able to go home and not invite everybody into my kitchen table and say, you know, "Let's all have dinner together." Needs a little bit of space there, so, that's why, that's why I'm trying to move it, so.
I remember having some of these conversations with you and, Jace, I just commend you for all of your efforts.
Well, we're just trying to, these properties, I mean, like Otis's, that was, his whole life was there. And then it comes up on the auction block and then, it's kind of a deciding factor. Is it going to be developed or is it going to stay as farm or, I mean, I can only, I can only buy so many properties, but, I buy what I can and try to save what I can and, you know. At any point, I could just say, "Okay, I'm going to sell out," but I don't want to get into that situation. I want to, my, my dream was always to fish, to have a greenhouse and to be self-sustaining. And I think the greenhouses, it doesn't have to make any money, it just has to be so you don't have to spend as much at the grocery store. And if we can have some fundraisers, then everybody that wants to grow in a greenhouse would just go there. Or, basically what I, I wasn't the most, the best kid in the world, you know, when I was growing up. And I, I got in trouble like everybody else. And what I'm doing with these, with these projects is, anybody that's ever done anything wrong or just wants to get back to the community, they can without any guilt. You know, sometimes it's judge, you know, it's court ordered. But if anybody has like, I don't know, thrown a rock or broken a window or something, you know, and they didn't get caught or they did get caught, but they could just say, "Hey, I'm going to volunteer in this greenhouse and I'm going to give some food to some people that need it." Or, even if you were just mean, you know, if you were just mean when you were younger and you just wanted to say, "Hey, I want to kind of give back a little bit." That's all, I just give the opportunity just to say, "Hey, you can volunteer in this program." There's no stipulation if you're a community member and you haven't done anything wrong, you can just come for the day and say, "Hey, I want to pitch in." Or show your kids, you know, it's not all about the fancy, whatever you're buying. You can just actually go and, and, you know, plant a flower or pick a flower or pick a tomato or, you know. You have a better understanding when you go to the grocery store. All the stuff's lined up and it's all fancy and lights. It actually comes from the ground and you have to pick it and you have to nurture it. That's all I try to do, I just try to show people that, you know, it's not just a cookie cutter thing that you buy at the store, it actually has to be worked. And what I do is, the people that get in trouble, I have them work it and then, I'm no therapist or psychologist or anything, but I think if you work with the land, I think it gives you something back to say, "Hey, you know, I broke something or I'm broken in my own, own life." And I'm going to try to give back with my own hands instead of, you know, just, I just try to, I just sit down with people and ask them, you know, "What's going on in your life and how can we try to straighten it out?" As you're working with them in a greenhouse setting, you say, "Hey, so what did you do? Why did you do it? You know, what can you do to get better?" You know, we get them into, you know, you know, high school diplomas and we try to get them into some type of training instead of saying, "Well..." You know, the greenhouses, the boat building, that's just a tool to get your mind going again and, you know, and like producing something. Instead of negativity, we're saying, "Okay, we're going to fix this boat and we're going to see it right to the end and then we're going to sail it." Or we're going to grow this plant, we're going to see it grow and then we're going to have the, you know, the vegetables and we're going to give it away. You know, instead of sitting in a jail cell and worrying about who's watching what on cable TV and saying, you know, "The world has done me wrong." You can do that too, but I try to show people that if you've done wrong, you can try to straighten yourself out. So, that's what I'm doing anyways. I just wanted to see if anybody had any questions or if we can get some more volunteers, you know, once these greenhouses start going up and...
Are you going to do something in like in a paper to say all that you're saying now?
Not Alex here.
There'll be a press release, there'll be a press release in the paper next week that talks about that project. And part of the emphasis of this will also be a fundraising effort done by Madomic Arts Project. Again, many of his charges have done artwork in the past. And they're going to be bringing all of their artwork, the Art Walk on July thirteenth will be featuring the Feed the Need program artwork. And in addition, Steve Hensel, who is a local woodcarver in this area, fairly well known, is going to be displaying some of his work for sale also as a, as a draw because he is a friend of this entire program, so that'll be positive. And I also want to say that addition to volunteers that he's needing in this program, he also needs, there may be businesses in this area, there may be other organizations that need work done around their facility. And that may better suit one or two of the people that he works with. Maybe there's some lawn mowing or maybe there's some specific project that is more suited to one of his people. So our businesses should share with him the kind of services they need in their facility. It may help him to distribute the load of what his people do. But again, the greenhouse is a dream and it's a fantastic dream. And just following the, they've already built part of the road leading to the greenhouses and the trails that are going to be in this area. How many hundreds of acres is this? How many acres is it?
I think it's only about seventy acres, but it goes, it goes back to,
It's impressive to me.
It goes through the railroad tracks on the dump road. Yeah, it goes from Route One to basically North Nibleborough Road. So, that was the reason why I wanted to keep it all intact. What I did on Depot Street with my parents' property is same idea. I bought my parents' farm, I bought my grandparents' farm. Then it goes onto the Madomic Valley Land Trust, which goes from basically right out back here where the railroad tracks are. And it goes all the way to the quarry and I don't know how many hundreds of acres that is, but I wanted to keep that all intact. Everybody can hunt, fish, swim, do whatever they want. That was another property. My father died. Nobody in the family knew what to do with it. I said, "I'll take it." You know, my grandparents died, nobody knew what to do with that, so I'll take that too. And then we're trying to just keep all of this land. You know, my grandparents died, nobody knew what to do with that, so I'll take that, too, and then we're trying to just keep all of this land together. And I've gotten family deals, I've gotten different things, just because I want this, this land to work, you know. That's what I did on Depot Street and then we did it on the Reef Road and now we're trying it on Route One. We do it in Booth Bay, Dan Muscata, Jefferson, we're doing it every place. Any place I can get a deal on some properties that's close to a school or close to Route One, we're trying it in every town there is, so, we're trying to. We're not trying to develop, which some people like development, but I just like to keep it as long as we can in a farming situation. Farming, fishing, whatever we're doing, you know, boating. And I think some of that stuff has kinda gone by the wayside, like, you know. People just say, well, just sell it, make some money and do what you wanna do, but I don't do that, you know.
Thank you, Tony. Any further questions from anybody? Thank you very much, thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Tony.
Citizen comments? Okay, select board comments?
I'd just like publicly say to Bob, congratulations on your election.
Thank you, Clint. I just wanted to, I just wanted to, sorry, did I interrupt?
No, I was just gonna say, we had a shellfish meeting last Thursday and got a hundred dollar donation from the Waldboro Business Association and I just wanted to thank you for it.
Great. It was a great concert at Broad Bay Saturday night, for those of you who attended it, um, there were two standing ovations. They, they're just so gifted, uh, that place called Halcyon. Uh, two of the musicians are, uh, close to Waldboro there, uh, Jenna Monz and Chris Davis' daughters. The other two guys, I don't really know, I've never gotten to know them or talked to them, but they're all amazing musicians. We had a clam spectacular on Saturday, the library did, that went pretty well. We're looking for more participation next year, we learned a few things, we'll do better next year. And Waldboro Day, of course, was a, a good day, I think, for a lot of folks in town. And thanks to the organizers who put all that hard work in to make it a fun day for everybody, that's all I've got. Managers report.
I think, um, somebody had a public comment and you.
Oh, did I miss?
Can I?
I'm sorry.
Take the floor.
Please, yeah.
Hi, I'm David Silver, resident of Waldboro, Chapel Road. I was here back in December and, um, talked about connectivity. At that time, um, we had, we had the signatures we needed for the street to turn into Spectrum, to get the clock rolling for the timeline to, to get us up and going. Just have a, a few concerns and it was generated, Bob, you know, I'll give it to you from some questions my wife, Robin, had asked you and you had responded to an email and I just, just have a couple of things, just maybe iron out and square, square out with us. Got a couple more if you guys wanna see them. Point number one, you feel that Spectrum is committed to getting make-ready situation? And that they indicated that they wanna come up on the road and, and do that, but in bullet two, you say that they're avoiding any commitment to when they'll get it done, so it seems like it's a little contradictory to one thing they committed and the next one they, they can't commit and, uh.
That's not a contradiction.
Okay, then, I guess I read it that way.
Now, make-ready involves parties other than Spectrum, the people who own the poles.
Okay.
So it takes time to get the arrangement on who goes where on that pole, sometimes you have to move lines, so it might be.
It can take up to six months.
It can take quite a while to get.
Okay, I guess I just said, it said Spectrum has committed, so I didn't realize it was the, the pole people that have committed to make ready.
I don't think there's any question that they're gonna have to do what needs to be done in order to, for Spectrum to put its lines up. But it is a matter of timing, it takes time, so that's why I couldn't indicate in the email to you a date certain as to completion.
Okay, um, point two, it, when I came in on December, we, the timeline looked like it, the, the nine months was gonna be August, but you indicate you're getting some feeling that it probably won't be December, January now till they can commit, so it sort of leaves us questioning.
Well, the problem is, is that they requested more.
But wouldn't, I, I understand in April they came back and we, we were, we were basically.
And that's, that's based on my, I, I'm just gonna, whether it's nine months from when we've originally put in the application or nine months from when the last ones went in, I'm not, I haven't gotten a specific answer whether they're, where they're counting from. But the fact that we have any movement on this, to me, is huge and I know it's frustrating to you guys, but we're further than we've been with them, um, so, and I think when I've had the conversation with Shelley, I think she's so gun-shy now giving any date because of not being able to get it done, that I'm not sure she's going to give us a date of when to expect it.
I think the other reason related to the fact that she doesn't control the other parties who are involved.
Right, the construction people.
So it would be foolish of her to commit to something that she can't actually commit to.
So, I guess, me speeding down the timeline, we come to August and there is no commitment, do we just, just wait?
You, you, pretty much, I, I mean, that's kind of, and I know you don't wanna hear that, but that's where we're at because there's, if legally, could they say we didn't get the last two in or three in until a certain date and that's when the nine months would start, technically, they could say that. Are we going to litigate that if they say that? No. So, yeah, you might have to wait till the January date. And I know it's frustrating, I, I, I get that it's frustrating, it's just that, um, and, and we've had this discussion amongst the CTC and myself, you know, that there's been some letters that were very harshly written letters that, quite frankly, I toned down a little bit because, you know, you have to have a rapport with people, um, so it, it's, I, I, it's not pleasant, but I think we are in the, I think we are right now captive to their timetable.
And I guess residents on the road, thinking forward, if, if August comes and goes, December, January comes and goes.
Well, then they're in violation of the.
Right, but then.
Franchise agreement.
Then can we look at option B, trying to do a grant and do something with LCI? Bob, Bob, point five, you thought that that would look like if we were in bad faith and, and they would give up everything, but I guess the question I have, there's places in town that have two options now, LCI and Spectrum and and why doesn't that look like that's bad faith if we would try to do that on Chapel Road?
Well, I think for one is that I don't think LCI's expressed, and I could be wrong on this. Have they expressed an interest in? I'm, I'm talking to Max, I'm sorry, in the back of the room.
Um, LCI said that they would, they're fine doing grants, they're not gonna do this on their own, especially if Spectrum's gonna do it because it's about who gets to the poles first because of the fees and permits that are involved. So, if Spectrum decides to drag their feet on this, then LCI could just move in, but I, I think that you need a grant for that, which would be option B if you wanna pursue that, but as you're, as Bob stated in the interview, I assume that would, that would pretty much be us saying we're not wholly using the franchise agreement. And then Spectrum would just say, well, if you're not, if you're going for this grant with LCI, you don't need us and we're gone.
I guess it's just frustrating, I, I mean, it's humbling to come up after Tony's spoken about what he's done and, and seem like I'm grumbling, but I'll have to take away one, one point that he did say that everyone's successful when they work together and I, I think the residents of Chapel Road just wanna work together, we wanna be connected, we wanna, we want service and.
And we want you to have it, we do.
We all work together.
We, we definitely want you to have it, it's just a matter of how to proceed and it's, believe me, it's two different trains of thoughts. John and I have had this discussion numerous times about how do you move people forward who, you know, we're dealing with a large corporation and it's, I hate to say it, but it's a small percentage and, you know, they're a corporation looking at the cost benefit factor. The fact that we've got them this far and, and I, I'm gonna, Ruben was great, you were great in, you know, kind of nudging them along and and we've tried two different, there's like a good cop and a bad cop and I don't know why I always have to be the bad cop. Ruben gets to be.
I thought I was the bad.
No, you're actually not near as mean as apparently Ruben is, I don't know.
I was unaware that I could mean.
But.
They probably just really don't wanna do this.
They don't.
But we're holding their feet to the fire with the franchise, which.
That's the only way they're ever gonna do it.
Right.
Yeah.
I think competition would breed a little bit of interest in them completing it, don't you? I mean, this, I live on Javel Road, I just moved here a year ago. Uh, I have two children, they both can't get internet in our home, the schools, you know, require them to do internet things. Extremely frustrating to me as well. I don't understand why the town, if we can get the grant signatures, which I believe were done before, they can't hold LCI. LCI moves forward on it, therefore Spectrum either does it or doesn't do it.
Because Spectrum's under the franchise agreement, they have to do it.
So you have no negotiating power whatsoever because we've signed a franchise agreement with them?
Under the terms of the, the franchise agreement, we have leverage as long as they're outside the terms of the agreement. There's no indication at this point that they're in violation of that agreement.
Sure, okay.
They're doing.
And LCI's gonna require a grant to do it and then LCI's stance is that then somebody else has to put up that other fifty percent and if we're gonna have to do that other fifty percent, that's gonna have to go before the voters of Waldboro. So that's also not a quick and easy option.
No, no, I understand and I'm sure Spectrum is a positive influence in this community for ninety-eight percent of the community. It's the other two percent that, you know, gets frustrated.
Right, I know.
They're not a positive influence for me.
No, I believe you.
They're not, I mean, I, Robin?
So, I just question the basis of this agreement we keep talking about because we've been involved a little bit with this, actually a long time, I've lived in this town all my life. Um, we've lived up on Chapel Road for thirty-four years now and way back when Lee Smith was the town manager and everyone was getting what was the beginnings of cable back in those days, we never could get it because there was never enough homes on the road. And so that's been kind of our message that's been given to us for many, many years. And it's just frustrating when we talk about these agreements because once we got involved here, it seemed like at one point, the information that was being given was once you have given, you produce those contract, they're not contracts, I guess, but to go out.
The applications.
Applications, to, to sign, have those signed and you come within that criteria of nine homes per mile and you get these signatures, you pass them in and they have six months to work. And then a couple of other meetings later, it seemed like it was a nine-month window and we kind of started, people were throwing around August twenty-second. So somewhere between, in my mind, six and nine months, we would expect this. And so you passed in the thing.
I passed in them in and then they took a while to review them and got them to their construction crew.
So four and a half months went by.
And then their construction crew came back to Shelley and said, hey.
So we got four more.
We got four more.
We went right out and gave them and then nothing happened again, so then it seems like somewhere someone automatically reset this six, nine-month, whatever window you wanna call it from now April, it was the middle of April, I think.
I'm gonna say, yes, it's possible that that's.
Did they, did they ask for an extension?
They have, we've been mute on that and I'm gonna tell you why, except to now, because we're talking about it in a public meeting. They very well could say, we're gonna go from this nine months, they could. And legally, are we gonna fight that? No. I mean, that's the, the reality is, and I think that's what Bob was trying to say in his response, is best case, worst case, please don't put that in the newspaper. But they could go from that date when those last four were handed in. I hope they don't, but they could.
Okay, so.
And I don't wanna sit here and say to you, it's gonna be six months and have it be nine months and have you be mad.
And I, and I understand that, but so, so then if it is the, what Bob, kind of the outside maybe idea that it could be December, January, okay, let's say that it is. If at that time, like my husband said, they're still not doing anything.
Then we can pursue them after the franchise, for the franchise agreement.
Okay, and so, so then what, what kind of, um, urgency is the town going to have to get us connected? Are we gonna then wait another year while people?
I will be.
I just, I just hope there's a commitment.
I will be honest with you, I do not know how long the process to enforce a franchise agreement in Maine takes. In New Jersey, it takes about two years. My only time I've ever had anything to deal with it was in a town next door to me that I, I'm just, I don't know what it takes, are you aware of any that have had to be enforced, John?
There's some that have taken longer than that that I'm aware of that are ongoing right now.
Yeah.
And, and I'm thinking that's very unacceptable, you know, I think that the people out on Chapel Road deserve to, to be connected. This is like a utility, like electricity and I'm hoping.
I agree, but there's a process we'd have to go through and even though we could follow the process perfectly, how that moves through the legal end of it, I, I, I don't, I don't have an answer for you.
So at that, at that point, would the town have the will, you know, the, you know, will to say, you know what? Enough is enough, these people have waited thirty-plus years, they still don't have anything. The majority of town, I want everyone that has it, the majority of the town has this availability, we don't. How many years has the town been collecting a franchise fee from these companies? Does anyone have any idea?
Since they, they came in here in the nineteen eighties, I believe.
Okay, so what, what is that, you know, that's a lot of years and I don't know if the fee has stayed constant or what, but that's a lot of money that we've been getting back from these cable companies over the years that we have had, you know, been able to put in the general fund to do other things. And I'm just thinking, if we come to December, January and now it looks like we're in a position where we're gonna be in a protracted, um, situation where now these people on Chapel Road are gonna be held at the mercy of this whole process, I think it's time that the town maybe takes that money and reinvest it into maybe getting us cable.
And that would be a town decision and that would have to go before the voters. So I, I don't know the commitment that people would have to vote for that.
So, so when that money comes into the general fund, does the town always have to vote on where that money goes to?
It traditionally has done that.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the whole budget process, so, yeah, the town.
That, that, okay.
Is there a hard and fast rule on a franchise agreement, date-wise? It seems pretty open-ended.
What, the date?
Do they actually give dates? I mean, we, I hear a lot of like months moving, like initially.
Nine months is what the franchise agreement says, that if, if we produce, if, if there are so many homes in a mile, they have nine months to do that.
So, let's just pick April fifteenth, so from April fifteenth.
Fifteenth, nine months.
Right.
If, then if they don't do it, they're in violation. If they're in construction now and it's already been submitted to construction, to me, it looks pretty good, it's the furthest we've ever, ever been. But, again.
If they're talking about make-ready.
Then.
I don't see.
You're pretty positive about it.
I think the probabilities are very minimal, but there's gotta be some force majeure that would make them not do this project. That's my view.
Is there anybody that would be willing to kind of keep us in the loop on as we proceed to try to alleviate some of the frustration that I think you all understand?
Well, basically what Shelley said in her last email is, I'm, we're not gonna, we're not in a position to give you bi-weekly updates, you know.
That's fine.
I'm just saying, when information becomes available.
She said she's not in a position, yeah.
I don't need a bi-weekly update, I just need maybe bi-annually, it would be nice.
Well, and it, it's, it's a tough thing, you know, I mean, it, it's, you know, I try to stay in touch with her and, and when she doesn't have anything to say, she doesn't get back and then all of a sudden she'll get back to me.
Is Shelley?
Is, she's our liaison to Spectrum. I typically hand it out to the CTC, um, when I get information, I hand it out. But yes, we can make sure when I hand it out to them, somebody's, I can give it to you, too.
I just think that would be very helpful to the rest of us that have been sitting very patiently and, you know, wondering, okay, what are our chances? Because it is, is, you know, everybody's got their own frustrations and it's not working really well for us out there and it hasn't for a long time.
I don't think there's been a situation where we've known something and you haven't. I think we've been pretty good at getting back to you.
We didn't know it got pushed back to April.
Sorry?
Well, we don't know that it has.
We don't know that it has.
Oh, so August could actually be.
August could, we, we don't know. August could, we don't know. And I'm, I'm.
How long is that answer?
Well, I'm hesitant to even open that discussion up. That's my issue.
And I don't think Shelley, our interlocutor with Spectrum, is in a position to say anything about the schedule. She doesn't.
I don't wanna give them the option to go past August.
Sure. Okay, that's understandable. Yeah, I wouldn't bring it up, but I feel like.
I kind, we kinda have.
To Spectrum, well, yeah, it'll be published, but, I don't know, it's just frustrating. I understand where she's coming from. Like I said, two kids, I honestly, if I don't get internet there by the time my kids are high school, I'd have to move. They have to have internet. It's like electricity.
No, you're right, it, it, people expect it.
Right. Thank you for listening, anyway.
Yeah. Sorry, we can't be more.
I understand, yeah, like, it's.
But don't think it's.
Like I said, I bought this house, it doesn't, that's not something that needs to be disclosed, you know?
It's not something that I, it's, it's not something, I'm, I'm gonna say every day I'm emailing her.
I'm sure you're not.
I'm not.
I understand it's a super-low priority.
Well, it's not even, it's not a matter of being a super-low priority, it's a matter of how you deal with this. And it's, you know, like I said, we've, we've had discussions amongst, Bob and I, sometimes I call him Banker Bob because he gets a little banker-like.
No, listen, kill him with kindness, I understand that. But you kill him with kindness to a point.
Right, and then, but what do we have? And until they go past a date, I can't hit them.
Well, I could say, I'm, we really have no choice, if it's January, it's January.
Right.
But if that comes, and that comes and goes, and there's no movement, it's clear, they have no intention.
Right. I think that, I would agree.
More, more importantly than that, how about September 1st?
So we're not gonna, we will not be patient to wait them out for two or three years in court because Charter Communications has a hell of a lot more horsepower than the town of Waldorf or anybody else, you know, as far as what they can do in court.
Right, and I would say, I'm hopeful.
I am too.
Well, it's great to be hopeful, but at the end of January, that hope is gonna fade fast.
Well, maybe it'll be surprising, and August will be here, and we'll see trucks.
Well, I was gonna say, I think September 1st would be a time to hold feet in the fire.
Right.
If we're past our date, will we?
Right, I can't really do the Julie thing until we're.
September 1st?
September 1st. You're welcome.
And she will do it, believe me.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, it is hard to know the balance between the good cop, bad cop.
I get it, I get it. Thank you. Yeah, oh, there you go, yeah.
I'm fine, I don't need a report. Only, I'm just gonna say that the one good thing that's coming up is the agenda, I'm sorry, it was not on the website, that was an oversight on my part, but. But Tanya and I looked at a website, one of the providers, we had them come in this week, last week actually, and they were awesome. So just keep your eyes out for that. I asked you to look at a couple. One was Kenabunk, if you look at that, they do a nice job, so.
Consent calendar, is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Sorry, okay. I, I did have a couple of things to discuss here. One is the shellfish conservation ordinance, I know Abden can answer this question. We approved this on June 11th. Why is it coming before the select board as part of the consent calendar?
I don't know about that.
Because you have to, although you approved it, I think she wanted to let you know that it was approved at the election.
Okay, but she's asking us to.
She's asking you to what?
She's put it on the consent, I guess she's asking us to consent to it, that implies more power than we have.
It probably does, but she's apparently always done that that way.
Just curious, that's all. And, and Abden, does the, the shellfish committee put its annual report in at the end of January?
Nope, February, February.
February, okay, so that's when we'll expect to see it. All right, and the Department of Transportation, in those letters they wrote to us, they do ask us if we'd like to have a formal meeting with them.
Yes.
On those two culverts they're gonna install. Do we wanna do that? Is there any desire to meet with DOT on those two culverts? One of them's down at the Frenchy of Waldeboro line, the other one's, I'm guessing it's right where Sampson's Cove is, five, 1.51 miles from Mayo Road. I think that's where, it's in that, in that area.
Is that the, just?
There's a pond there, and there's, on the one side of the road, and then you've got Sampson's Cove, kind of, Cassin's Cove on the other. It's where that roof comes down.
Oh, so it must be right by your driveway then?
Yeah, it's not too far from me, no. Okay, I guess everybody's fine with it. Were you ready to vote? All in favor? Okay. New business, sorry, Susan?
Many questions are, one of the things being approved is May 28th revised, and I don't have a copy of revised May 28th minutes, so I don't.
We'll get it for you. The revision was something that Rose didn't like in the wording of it, so we changed it.
But I could get a copy.
Yes, you can.
Yep.
Have you bumped off on the citizen comments?
You may make a comment if you have one to make.
Well, I have a concern, I didn't know if I could bring it out.
Please. Can you identify yourself, please?
My name is Norma Hunt, I live at 700 Castner Road. Those are pictures of my property from April 29th. I've been gone all day, I came home that night, and this is what I found. I waited a couple of days to calm down, I'm still not calm, it's now been two months. So May 1st, I came in, I spoke to the town manager about what had happened out in the front of my property. She shook my name, she took my number, said she'd have John Degle call me. May 2nd, John Degle called me. We talked, I told him my concerns, I told him how upset I was with what had been done to my property. And nobody could tell me a reason why it was done, a legitimate reason. And since May 2nd, I have heard absolutely nothing from this town regarding what happened to my property. The mess is still there, I refuse to touch it, it's not the mess that I made. I don't feel I should have to clean it up. I also feel, as does my fiancee and the rest of my family, that I want monetary compensation or I want it restored to the way it was. That was a privacy hedge that I had been, that was planted on my property 23 years ago by my ex-husband that had been well-maintained, it didn't come in contact with any wires, poles, mailbox, signage, or anything. It was beyond a stone wall. The other two pictures that are attached to that are properties on the same road. One has a stone wall that is 11 feet away from the edge of the pavement. Nothing on the other side of his stone wall was touched as it was on mine. The other property, they've got bushes and everything else, again, 11 feet away from the edge of the pavement, nothing there was cut. They've got stuff that's even closer to the road than 11 feet, and nothing was cut. You breached any type of protocol by going beyond my stone wall. Nowhere in the 24 years that I have lived at this property has anybody told me that my stone wall was in any right-of-way, it should be moved, or that anything I had planted on the other side of that stone wall, close to my house, should be, was in a right-of-way, or anything, ever, in 24 years, have I been told anything? And don't tell me that somebody from this town hasn't been out to my property in 24 years to be able to tell me anything.
So.
And if you think this is mad, this is nothing.
This is, okay, so this is one of the roads that's going to be paved, so it has to be trimmed and ditched. I was under the impression John had spoken to you and explained that the right-of-way does move on that road. He produced the survey and said that all the cutting was in the right-of-way. That, I mean, that, maybe that's wrong.
Maybe he needs to show you the survey.
Show you the survey.
Maybe he should've come out, like he said he was gonna.
Yeah, I, I wasn't aware that he hadn't, because I had asked him, and he said, yes, he had talked to you, so I thought it was.
Well, he did talk to me on the phone, he did call me after you gave him my, my name and number. He ca, he did call me.
Right, I'm, I'm glad he did, at least.
But I still didn't.
But you're right, he should've come out and showed you if, because, I mean, I, I know he gave me a copy of the survey.
And, again, when he talked to me on the phone, he didn't say anything about ditching, he didn't say anything about paving, he didn't say anything about anything. I basically got a runaround.
Okay.
And that's pretty much what I told you was gonna happen.
Well, I know he's, I know they're ditching it, they're paving it, so I think that's all, that, I know that's all part of the work, but I will.
But when were you gonna let us know this?
I was under the impression John had, when I had asked him, and he said, yes, I talked to her.
No, when were you gonna let everybody on that road know that something was going on? Nobody was told anything in advance, because I could tell you, had I known this was gonna happen, I would've stood there, and they would not have touched my property without my permission.
Well, if it's in the right-of-way, you, you, you can't really do that, but that's a whole nother discussion for another day. But I will definitely talk to John about how he notices people.
I think we need to sit down with you and John and Julie, she's.
And I think it should've been cleaned up, they left it all behind.
Well, let's determine the facts before we decide what has to be done.
So, so.
The fact is that they cut. And when they cut, they didn't take, they didn't take any of the mess with them, they just cut it and left it.
There's another fact that we haven't ascertained here, and that other fact is that it may well be in the right-of-way.
And it may well be, but again.
But let's find that out.
They still left the mess behind, it looks horrible.
Let's find that out.
We, I can definitely, I will definitely make an appointment to her, you to see John. And I.
Castner.
Castner. Yeah, that's on the list to be paved this year.
And again, it's fine and good, it's, it's fine and good if it's in the right-of-way, I understand right-of-ways, I'm not that stupid, I get it. However, they, they could've done a better job trimming it up and cleaning it up and not leaving the brush and branches and everything just laying there. I go down the road, I've seen where they've cut other places, and I don't see stuff laying in the road or in the ditch or anything, it's all been cleaned up.
Yeah, I will definitely talk to him about that.
And that's in the pictures.
Yep. Thank you very much. Okay.
Laugh, it's not funny, you wouldn't want it to you.
Uh, new business. Town of Waldeboro Dutch Neck Landing Project.
And here's Max.
Couple weeks ago, I had given you an engineering proposal attached to my town manager's report. So this is just, you're just gonna have to allow us to, Max will tell you what we're gonna do, and then hopefully you'll agree that it's a good idea to proceed.
So last year, the town submitted a grant to Shore and Har, an application to the Shore and Harbor Grant. This was to do an engineering survey for Dutch Neck Landing. This would be looking at how much it would cost to make the improvements to the landing itself. The concrete slabs, I think, were a primary thing that would need to be replaced. Looking at options for a second location to have smaller boats launched off so that it wouldn't have to take up the launch itself. I think there was also inclusion of parking, trying to make that a bit more cleaned up. We were able to get the grant, and the total amount would be 24,000. We would provide 6,000 for in-kind cash match. We got it, and we sent out the RFP. I sent it to four engineering groups, to my knowledge. One was Gartley and Dorsky, who were the only ones to send back an RFP with the total amount that, I don't know if you've shared that with the select board yet or not, okay. I was told by one other group that they would submit something, but I never heard anything from them, and then two others just never responded. We have until December of this year to send an invoice to the Maine Coastal Foundation to get the reimbursement for it. But I just need to send a notice to Matt Nixon soon, who's the commissioner, to say where our status is for this. So that's it.
Okay, I, I'm a little confused about this. What we're, what we got the grant for was an engineering study.
Yes.
Is that right?
Correct.
And that study basically said, here's what we recommend you do.
No.
Well, Julie King, go ahead.
This is the engineering study. The basis for it.
Can you elucidate a bit?
Well, they're going to design the improvements.
All right, so this is what they're suggesting we do, they're gonna design.
Design the improvements.
The improvements, all right.
The town did a similar, the town did a similar thing with Pine Street's landing back in 2012, I believe.
Right.
And we're using the very same.
Same person.
Yeah, same person, same format and everything. We, I mean, if Gartley and Dorsky sees much, many more improvements that can be made there, then they can certainly do that. But we outlined the key items that we need them to look at.
And what were the key items that you outlined?
The ramp.
The ramp.
Providing for a smaller side-launch, almost.
Yep.
I did like the idea of that swimming pool that would, could be naturally created down there, that was really cool, but.
For context, that was something that was, I think, in a 1981 plan, that I still have the, the map in my office, if anyone's interested, whether they're in the audience, look forward.
It was perfectly designed to make it like our own little swimming pool down there in the river, which would've been really cool. Anyway, so that's, that's basically what they're gonna look at. But, yeah, they'll tell us, and I, I thought they did a decent job of the proposal, so. Can we, I'd like to, your permission to award that to them. You're gonna have to vote on that, though.
Okay.
They've done a lot of municipalities, I see.
Well, they designed that wall, and the wall did not move during the ice.
Isn't that something?
Isn't that something?
Bingo.
Did pretty good with that.
They were fishing really well, too.
Did it?
Yeah.
You didn't wanna, you, you guys didn't burn anything down, down there this time, either.
All right, well, is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor? All right.
All right.
Do you have what you need, Max?
Uh, for this item, yes.
Okay. Appointment of Jeff McNally to the Water Department Committee.
Go move.
Second. Any discussion?
Been involved in water his whole life.
It's his business.
He knows it. And he attended the last meeting, and it was like, wow, why wasn't he here at the first and second one?
Because we were concerned of his employment, yeah.
He does work for the PUC.
Has he retired?
No.
Almost.
And he's indicated that if there is a conflict of any kind, he will declare it and recuse himself. All right, all in favor? Okay. And the ordinance review committee needs an additional member, and I believe it's in a member who has to be a member of the Conservation.
No.
Right?
No. So this came up is, when, when everybody was selected the first time around, we had representation across the board. But then the person who represented one section of town resigned from the Conservation Commission. So either, you guys have to make a decision that you're either going to expand the pool or we're going to have to look for a Conservation Commission member who represents that section of town that isn't represented currently. Because most of the volunteers don't wanna serve both the Conservation Commission and the.
Review Committee.
The Review Committee, and the person who currently serves as the Conservation Commission person then puts one section of town well overrepresented on the board. So you, as a select board, have to make a decision, do you want to expand the pool to include another?
Not necessarily be a.
Not a board member. So we're going over and creating one more at-large position. You would be creating one more at-large position.
If I recall, the composition of that Review Committee was set in the comp plan, which we all voted on. So I don't know that we have the authority to change the composition of that committee. There is one person who might be willing to join the Conservation Committee and also be on the ordinance review committee. But that needs to be firmed up. So I suggest.
From that area?
Yeah, yeah, from North Waldeboro.
Is there a way to maybe contact them?
I spoke to him Friday night. And of course, it slipped my mind that he also needs to be on the Conservation Committee. So I need to go back to him on that and ask that we perhaps table this until our next meeting, and hopefully it'll all be straightened out.
And will we table to the next meeting?
Okay.
Can I make a comment for?
Yes, please.
I would just like to say, I don't mind the idea of an alternate member. One of our members who represents the Shellfish Committee is only dependent on the title, so I wouldn't mind it being considered an alternate member.
Well, technically, the Shellfish Committee. Well, technically, the Shellfish Committee gave an alternate member. So if Chuck can't make it, um, Glenn is supposed to come.
Yeah, that's kind of their responsibility to make sure that happens. That's okay. So we had a, a motion and a second, correct?
Table, yeah.
All in favor of tabling, okay, thank you.
To when, the next meeting?
Next meeting, yep. Old Business, twelve-one, health insurance for select board members.
So this came up at the last meeting, and we tabled it because we thought the full membership should be here. Um, at a manager's meeting, um, we were discussing health insurance, and one of the things came up that I found interesting was that some of. Um, actually quite a few towns allow their select board members to participate in the health insurance. Not that you, not that the town pays for your health insurance, but you pay for your own health insurance through the town. Cuz technically you are employees and you can do that. It was an interesting thought, um, I didn't know if that would be anything you guys would be interested in, but what we could do is. You guys could vote to allow participation, again, no pay towards it. Um, but you could allow it, and those people who are over a certain age, also, you, there's a supplemental you can get if you're over, you qualify. But I, I just didn't know if there was any interest in it, if it's something you wanted us to even think about, but. I thought it was important that you knew, it, it's, apparently was discussed once before, um. And it was, when this first came in, when you were participating with MMA, but that was because, at the time. Um, the proposal was that there would be, the stipends would go towards a portion of that. Um, that you receive for pay, um, but this would strictly be something that you pay to participate in, so. You're not really getting any benefit other than the ability to participate in the plan.
Does the town get any benefit?
No.
No.
I would say that it, it could, because you're increasing the size of the pool, which might make it better. In the end, for everybody, if there's more people participating, the cost might go down, but not, none, no real foreseeable benefit.
No, the only, the only one I can think of is that it might, uh, induce more people to run for the board. And that could be either a plus or a minus.
Yeah. And to be honest, I don't know what anybody's situation is on the board, I just thought.
Look at our Gray.
I just thought it was something interesting I learned, and I thought I should pass it on, so, that's, that's the only, that's my only thing.
Option.
It's an option.
Doesn't cost the town any money.
It wouldn't cost the town any money.
If you, if you do it, it's, you're, it's on your nickel.
Yep.
I don't have a problem with it.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I don't know, just.
It doesn't cost the town any money.
Right, I'm not opposed against it, it just seems kind of self-serving, if that's the right term.
For us to be voting on, yeah, I don't know that any of us are gonna take advantage of it, though, so it's not self-serving.
Yeah.
But somebody in the future may, you know, take advantage of it, I mean, you never know.
So if we approve this, and we don't even know what the figures are or not, you, you already talked the figures.
Well, figures are the same thing that, that, that we would pay, I mean, the average cost for a husband and wife, I think, is around thirteen thousand dollars. Singles are around eight, so, you know.
And if I recall, it's a pretty minimal plan.
It's, it's, right, it's not Cadillac by any, but it's, it's something, and it, you know, if it's something that other places have done. But, I mean, some places actually pay it, I'm not suggesting we pay it. But no, I'm sorry. That would change your vote, though.
No, I'm just thinking. Hey, I fought for five months for an MRI, so, I've been down that bad road, too.
Right, I mean, no, I mean, there, I will say this, it's not a Cadillac plan, and there's a lot of out-of-pocket with it, but I will tell you, the care is good. You know, it's, it's, it's Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know? It's just an option.
Yep.
That was it.
Any further discussion?
I'm neutral.
Sorry?
I'm neutral, so, you know.
I did, I don't think it affects the majority of us in any event, so I don't think it is self-serving.
Speak for yourself, don't.
I'm, well, I am, I'm sorry, I shouldn't speak.
You shouldn't say that, you don't know how, you don't know anybody's else's age up here.
Yes, we do.
There's a lot of kids down here.
We all do.
And you didn't mention the age.
I'm thirty-nine and holding on for dear life.
All in favor of the motion? Five-zero. Property maintenance ordinance.
Do we wanna workshop on this?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what we'd agreed to, I think, at the last meeting I was at.
Yeah.
Did we, and I forgot, okay, that's possible.
We've done the local, with the union.
Yeah.
Uh, Max is gonna talk to us about marijuana caregivers.
Yeah.
It's Max's up, his favorite subject.
He probably knows the ins and outs of every part of it.
So it's been a while since I've been back here, uh, talking about this specifically. Um, figured with all the budgets and warrants that we were already going through during the election time. I now have done some research on this, bit more polished it up a bit. Um, and, but the dispensary moratorium now in effect, this is another part we can go on to. Um, regarding medical marijuana in Maine, or Waldabar at least, so. I, I'm, guess I'm just curious what you want me to start off talking about.
Well, this really deals with retail caregivers.
So, yes and no, so retail caregiver, with how the state law is written now. A caregiver storefronts, like Highbrow, for example.
Yep.
We do not allow that until the town decides to opt-in, and we have that written somewhere in our book, that we allow this. Type of commercial use. We don't have that in our books, so we don't allow that. The only exceptions are the three that were already approved before December thirteenth of last year. Um. Now, what this would do is talking about caregivers, or just any medical marijuana. Operation that takes place outside of someone's primary residence. From my email that I sent yesterday, this is modeled after what Ellsworth did last year. So if you wanna grow your five, six plants in your home, that would go to you or your patient. That's fine, that's in your right, but if you want to buy a farm. Um, or, if you wanna buy Bennys and turn that into a grow operation, you need to live there essentially to do that. If you wanna get a farm somewhere dedicated up in North Waldaborough and have your operation out of there, you need to live there. That's what this moratorium would be saying. And if you decide to get a second location, you have to live there if you wanna do anything relating to medical marijuana.
So, it, you can't say, even if you live there, you can't.
If you live there, if that is your primary residence.
We can't regulate it.
That is something that is protected by the state.
Right now, how it is now.
LD fifteen thirty-nine, uh, but there is, but we can't, but this was just the template for at least what the Ellsworth model is. If we do wanna add more to it, we can, I assume Freeman, that's, were you just raising your hand about that?
The registered caregiver, assuming that has to be a nonviolent, you cannot prohibit the number, but you can actually regulate it. There are permissible regulations, and other towns like Gray have actually put through regulations upon it, but you can't prohibit it.
Yes.
Does that mean, um.
Signage, advertising, setbacks.
So it doesn't mean anywhere in the town?
Odors.
Cuz there's certain things that are only allowed in certain places.
We can't, we can't say, no caregivers in town, we can't do that.
That, that, what I'm talking about, I'm talking about, like, commercial bus- business, uh.
That is something.
A or B, or rural weekends.
Well, Augusta did something similar to that. Um, this, this just, the Ellsworth model that was done last year, this was just one of the examples that we could use. Uh, last time I was here, the, I was talking about a thousand-foot setback, just in general, from any public areas, schools, churches. Municipal buildings or property. Um. That, we can do a hybrid-type model for the moratorium, this was just.
He needs some guidance on what you want.
Yes, I do need to hear an exam, I do need to hear what is desired, and Marcia had a hand.
Uh, Max and I have talked about this, and their, um, home occupancy in the land ordinance right now, I mean, that's pretty restrictive. It regulates sound, noise, odor, requires them to mitigate smells, sound. Um, and, um, when you go and you do the research, um, the towns are doing a variety of things, because you can regulate a lot. You cannot regulate, um, they have to be allowed in the town, but you can regulate what district they're in.
That's.
Right.
My question was.
And you can, you know, and you can regulate, like, if they have a house, what's happening in some of these places is that they are having. Um, they're called, um, uh, grow-ups, so they're buying homes, and then they're gutting the home. Putting holes in the, in the floors, and they're using, they have a little bedroom that they have, so that they say that they're living there. And then the whole house becomes a cultivation place. And then it gets moldy, et cetera, and a lot of the realtors are saying that, all of a sudden, these homes are going on, you know, to be auctioned off. And no one knows, and they go in there and find that the house has to be gutted, because they have purchased these homes. And they're actually using them as greenhouses. So, there are, some of these towns are saying, as a matter of fact, I think it's in the hu- uh, the home or occup- occupancy. There's a certain percentage of the home that can be utilized.
Yep.
For the business. And there's a percentage of that, so there's a, there's a lot of restrictions you put on them to make sure. That it's, it's like, these are supposed to be mom and pop kind of things in homes, they're not supposed to be a huge commercial cultivation facility. And that's what's happening in a lot of the towns. So, a lot of the problems are with, um, traffic. So where you have a small little road, and you may have one person per eight hours, and now you're getting all of these cultivators. Cuz they're having multiple cultivators in these co-ops in these homes, and now you're having, you know, uh, and they can hire as many people as they want. They used to only be able to hire two, they can now hire as many as they want, I believe, Max. And so, now they're going up and down the road, and they are delivering, and so now your little town road goes from one person an hour. Or eight hours, to now you've got, you know, four, five, six, seven cars going up and down the road to make deliveries. And I'm just saying, that they, this has really expanded into a concern for many of the residential neighborhoods in the rural areas. Where they're taking mom and pop homes.
In Maine?
In Maine, and mom and pop homes, and they're converting them into grow co-ops.
A lot of these places are happening inland, though, a lot of this stuff's happened, I, I've heard about these places.
Don't they, aren't they limited to the number of plants?
Yes.
And the number of customers?
No.
No.
Not, not customers anymore, they took out.
Oh, they used to be.
They took out that requirement.
Okay, yeah.
You only five.
Yeah.
So.
Five plants per.
So what do you need from the select board?
Uh, this, just more stewing this over and deciding if this is the direction you wanna go, I've spoken with the assistant planner from Ellsworth. Steven Muller, Full- Fuller, I think, is actually the name, um, he, he was involved when this was passed. Uh, he said that since it's pa- since the moratorium and then the new ordinance regarding this passed, other than the occasional question. What's the process for doing it, there's really been no trouble at all legally, or, I mean, people are. Some of the caregivers have been a bit angry that, you know, I wanted to do this, but it pretty much ended there. Um, I've spoken with the state marijuana program, Ginger Jackson, about this, they said that. If someone comes to them, say, and gets the card, they are always told they have to contact the town to make sure there's no new. Rules, regulations that we have, so if someone is getting a caregiver card, they are supposed to contact us to see what rules we have on that. Uh, for home occupation, just the comments there, uh, I don't believe it is, I don't know if it's a twenty-five percent.
No, it's twenty-five hundred square feet is what you're allowed, and a certain percentage of your house.
Yes, it's supposed, similar to what you were talking about, it's supposed to be, you could drive by it and have no idea there's a business operating out there. Like a, like a home office.
So if our home occupancy already says all this, why can't we apply that?
But they could still have a twenty-five hundred square foot building.
We, we could do that if we want, I could include that in this moratorium, saying.
I, I just, that was my question, if it's already so restrictive, why couldn't we apply it?
The regulations you'd want that would go beyond that.
No, I understand that, but for right now, if somebody were to come in.
Yes.
We could apply that standard.
Yes, and this would make them forcibly be in that domicile unit instead of saying, we're doing this own special thing.
At least for now.
So that is something I can include in this moratorium, if that is what.
That makes sense.
I'm getting nods, so I will do that.
So we know if a person is going to become a caregiver, they have to have some sort of a license, or.
From the state.
From the state, and we know in our town who they are and where they are. We don't.
Not where they.
Didn't you say they were supposed to come to here?
Just to find out, they are supposed to contact us and say, I want to do this, are there any rules, regulations?
They don't have to.
There is a technique.
But you can get their name and address.
There is a technique to do this, we're talking about this, we're allowed to charge a nominal fee, a fee that correlates to the amount of effort. That our coenforcements or our law enforcement have to do to regulate this industry. And let's say we made it fifty dollars, we could say that every registered, remember, there are non-registered caregivers. Every registered caregiver, he says a fifty-dollar fee, which would have to come to the desk, and that way, they would know who they were. Now their confidentiality issues about that knowledge, but we could require a fifty-dollar fee.
But what about the non-registered? What would happen, they call, they just may decide not to come in and register it.
Non-registered, well, there's two different versions of that, legally non-registered, the, for example, if a family member threw stuff for their, for someone in their family, that'd be a non-registered.
Yeah.
Registered carriers are people that have outside patients that they're assigned. Now, of course, there are people that do that and aren't registered, but they're outside the law.
Yes. And, and in terms of finding out, Jan, your question about someone and finding out where it is. The process that's supposed to happen is if there is suspicion of someone who is not a registered caregiver, but giving to others, or. Someone who's working outside the bounds and never contacted town, what, what the process is, is our coenforcement officer contacts the state and says. I have been getting sus- some suspicious comments about this individual, can you confirm if they are?
Okay.
Not registered.
Not registered, and. Then if there's ac- then if it's not, then the state will be involved.
And the assumption is that the state's registry is accurate, up-to-date? That's the assumption.
Yes, yeah. There is that leap, there is that leap of faith there.
But if you go ahead and you, you know, you've had that small little minor fee, then they have to come to the town, and then, and then the town knows exactly where.
Well, for the minor fee, that could be included in the site plan, that's already sort of set up for something that needs CEO or planning board approval, cuz that's. Uh, go ahead.
Well, the concern, I'm sure many of you have heard us already from living on Flinders Corner Road. Um, that this type of facility has been there, and was there for many, many years. And, um, it really was very difficult, um, to convince anybody to come up and take a look at what was going on. We were always told, there's nothing anybody can do, there's nothing anybody can do, there's nothing anybody can do. But they, they had been violating the home occupancy rules for twenty, thirty-on-years.
Not quite that long, cuz I, we've only owned it for like twenty-four, twenty-five, so, if that's.
Ten, ten years, I don't know, but they had been violating it for a while, and we could.
You didn't own it.
No, I didn't know, but I own the property.
You said, we.
Behind it, well.
You didn't own it.
Done. No.
So it's been hard to have people take it, you know, if the town.
Side business?
And actually come out.
Just clarify that.
And actually check it out.
But let's let's put some moratorium for the moment. I mean, we're, I think we're delving into ordinance stuff, but we need time to develop an ordinance.
As I said, I think to a memo to you guys a while back, now that the dispensary memo, that was one thing. This was the second thing, and then the third was to get a marijuana ordinance, just to cover it all into a nice package so that there's no confusion for next.
Reactivate the committee for the ordinance.
Well. React for the ordinance, but the moratorium is what we need to address now. We need to have a moratorium.
Well.
I'd like to have a podium, could I share the podium with you?
Yeah, you can go ahead, I'll do it.
The moratorium that we did, the first one on retail, was because the state allowed us to actually have an opt-out. So we did that, but it inferred that we would actually have an ordinance, a vote on an ordinance, right, either way. And the second one in the dispensary is the same thing. It assumes that in good faith, we will have then, to the voters, an ordinance that either says we will have dispensaries or we'll keep DD or we'll eliminate DD. So moratoriums have to imply something, an action. They're not, you can't just have a moratorium that stands outside of an action. So it implies an ordinance. Just a footnote in this, by the way, take Ellsworth out of applicability and purpose.
Yes, that was an accident on this.
The, one of the issues comes in, which is narrow, is it isn't clear to me in the law, and I went through all this definition of registered caregivers, that they make a distinction in any of these, the medical marijuana law that I, you may know, see it, it's a question to you. Does it make a distinction between domiciled and non-domiciled registered caregivers? Because I couldn't find that, if you can find it for me, send it to me, I couldn't find.
The state law?
Yes.
You're wondering if they have a separation between domicile and non-domicile?
In their definitions, yeah, I couldn't find it.
I've never seen it.
I've never seen that definition. So I I'd like to clarify that legally first, if there is that distinction. But then I want to go to the broader issue about, we need to, I think, before we do a vote on the moratorium, is have a committee, could be land use planning, whatever, or you could create a committee. We should discuss the kind of regulations we want on registered caregivers. You know, setbacks, all the things you want, and then have a moratorium that sort of direct, is in the direction of saying that this is where we would have a vote on what kind of regulation. It would be much broader, I think, than this because it would go to some of the things that Marcia just talked about. You know, and it would include odors and 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 square footage, you know, you know, there's a bunch of things you can can do. I'm not saying here that we should determine what we should or shouldn't do, but I think we should discuss that that menu of potential regulations.
Can I interject something?
Yes.
Back when we first started talking about a caregiver moratorium, we'd done the dispensaries, that was done. The issue, the concern was raised that we'd done nothing about caregivers.
Registered.
Registered caregivers.
And that we had to have a moratorium on registered caregivers. That's what this is trying to address. Now, the question is, and the question you're raising is, do we need to go through the ordinance language and I, the direction of the ordinance first before we do a moratorium? Or do we get this done and then reform reform your committee, the marijuana committee, and ask the committee to do this additional ordinance work?
That's one possibility. Now, one thing I have to ask, and I don't, my lawyer is ambiguous in this. If we put a moratorium on registered caregivers generally, I'm not sure anybody will litigate it, but they could litigate and say, listen, you've actually said that we can't, you've limited the number of caregivers.
Why can't we just enforce our home occupancy ordinance on that?
My recommendation, and again, it's just a thought, would be in the interim, we should do that. While we're drafting an ordinance.
Ordinance.
Right, I'm not sure that a moratorium, unless it's more, hits certain things, would be the right thing because someone could argue that you're basically saying, no registered caregivers can open up until you guys say we can't.
So what you guys should do tonight is?
Reform the committee.
Well, it's already formed, you could just reconvene it.
Ask them to reconvene.
And work on the ordinance.
And we could, and of course, interesting there, you have got three people that are part of the medical marijuana industry on that committee.
That's good, that's not a bad thing. That, do you need to hear everybody, Freeman? You can't just go down your own road. It's got to be participatory, and we know, we had a hung jury the last time. Because.
There was a majority.
Yeah, well, sorry, we had a majority and a minority report. To me, that's a hung, a hung jury.
Excuse me, we have one extra vote that you're forgetting, which was, put it over to the the side that you wish not to remember.
Well, I'm not remembering anything here in terms of, I have an axe to grind, I have time to grind.
Well, we need to clarify that point, there was a vote.
Fine, but my hope is that the committee can come together and reach a consensus. That was my hope from the beginning.
But it can't.
And it didn't happen.
They won't, they won't.
They won't come to a consensus.
Then what's the point?
The problem is, is the mix is difficult when you have three people who have skin in the game.
And who are not residents. They're not residents.
And they have skin in the game because this is what they do for a living. And when you, when you're sitting there and you're doing this for a living and you're, other people are on this committee who are for concerns about development of children, worries about families, worries about addiction, and all these other things, they have no skin in the game, and these three people have skin in the game.
But they should.
And you cannot get them, you cannot get them to compromise, that's all they want to talk about. All they want to talk about.
You have fishermen and the shellfish, helping out the shellfish, right?
And it was very, very difficult, I was on that committee, we could not get consensus, we could not get them beyond anything.
I wouldn't want someone who wasn't.
Excepted, this is my livelihood, I've been doing this, I want this, and so we we got nowhere. There's other people out there who use medical marijuana who could be on the committee.
Yes, and I would, I would have stronger, and shellfish people, he's a resident, he's part of this community, they're not, they don't even live here.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I think people.
Maybe we need to reform the committee then.
We ask for applications.
For residents.
For residents.
Right.
I know there are people who are in the middle, there were none of those on the committee.
Well, I can just think of one, or we have one caregiver who is, has a storefront, who is a resident.
And and that would be good, to have a registered caregiver who's a resident in Waldahboro who's committed to our town would be much better.
So I guess, I guess what we're saying.
And she'd be interested.
Representing the consensus is that we need to ask for applications to a reconstituted marijuana committee.
But we want residents.
And that the applications have to come from residents. Is that what we're saying tonight?
And maybe we should have a balance, it it was a.
We do want a balance.
Two ends, we had no in the middle.
We we need to have balance.
Yeah, we need to have not, not pros and cons.
And I don't know how you get there from here, but maybe the list of people who apply will will tell us.
Well, I think you and Katie will be finding that out.
Well, can't we take, can we at least take the residents that we had from the last marijuana committee? And and the people who weren't residents, then we'll have to fill those slots. Does that make sense?
If they're, are you?
Because that way, people don't have to be re-interviewed.
But I'd also make one other point, with respect to medical marijuana, most of us are not opposed to, I'm not opposed to at all. So I have no, as opposed to recreational, which I think you understand my passion, I I'm not opposed to medical marijuana. And so I I have no, I don't want to ban it. And furthermore, the law is very clear, you cannot ban registered caregivers.
Right.
They said it as fiercely and clear in print as you could possibly imagine. So whatever we do has to be fair, it has to be rational. And the lawyer that I talked to said one other thing, it not only has to appear neutral on its face, it has to be relatively neutral in practice. You could not, for example, in a small town, have a thousand-foot set-offs that in effect made it impossible to have anybody in business. So it has to be reasonably fair and and in practice neutral.
So the residency required on this committee.
Yeah.
Do they?
And you're okay with allowing the ones that are already residents who've served on the committee, they don't have to be re-interviewed?
No, they don't have to be re-interviewed.
See, what happened with that last committee is that we we were trying to talk about, it was retail, recreational marijuana, we were trying to walk the road. And we were talking about medical marijuana, I can't remember.
Retail.
And they just kept on talking about medical marijuana, medical marijuana, medical marijuana, and we could never get any. It just, you know, it just was going back to, it was really impossible.
I think we know what we need to do.
We need a motion on that.
Yep.
I'd move it.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? So the motion is.
What is the motion?
Sorry, there's.
I haven't had a chance yet to say, sorry, say one thing. I represent the Economic Development League, which I'm a member. And there was a discussion about making this a family-friendly town as best possible as a way to bring business into this town. And I got that message loud and clear, and I hope everybody here knows that the Economic Development League Committee is desirous of trying to improve this town in step with the initiative that Julie is heading up with the YMCA to make this more of a family-friendly town. So therefore, I wish to make sure everybody understands that. And you personally, I am not against medical marijuana, provided it's properly framed up in the town documents and enforced, thank you.
Thank you.
You may not be able to go home with your wife tonight.
That will be the work of the committee, it will hopefully strike that balance. And is there any further discussion?
I'm just ready to vote.
Everybody, okay, one more question. All in favor?
Of what, what was the motion?
What is, could you go over the motion?
The motion is to re-establish the marijuana committee by requesting applications from residents who wish to serve on the committee, and to keep the the current residents who are on the committee. That's the motion.
The people that are on the committee will have to be residents.
That's correct.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Is everybody ready to vote? All in favor? And thank you, that was good input.
Anything else?
I don't, we don't have a Philbrook fund tonight, so I believe we have a motion to.
To adjourn.
To adjourn.
A second.
All in favor? Thank you.